I mean, seven o'clock is seven o'clock for 59 seconds.
Good evening. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of Education. Mr. Tornello, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Baer?
Here.
Mr. Eady?
Here.
Mr. Oskus?
Here.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Here.
Mrs. Menzger?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 2A, approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 2A, approval of agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second.
Discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item 3A, Board President Q and A. Last month, we had Mr. Jim Clements. He came and spoke, gave affirmation of staff, students, and our schools. We'd like to thank you for providing your feedback. It is much appreciated. Item 3B, public comment. Mr. Tornello, do we have anyone for this evening?
Nancy Mara.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. Nancy Mara, 39, Mini Wawa Drive. Too loud now, no? 39, Mini Wawa Drive, Timberlake, Ohio. Thank you for letting me address the board, and thank you very much for the firm that you chose to pick our new superintendent. It was a great, I thought it was a great night. I thought the people had a lot to say. I think I heard a lot of teachers do a great job. Teachers need more backup, and teachers need some help with discipline. I did hear many good things about our special needs programs, and a lot of good things about our children that are potentially college-bound and are soy students. I did hear that we need a little bit more help with our 80% in the middle. So that's what I heard. I think I heard across the board. I thought the participation was great. I came here tonight with a comment. If you've ever been on Rumble or Lobbyists for Citizens, unfortunately, there was an incident last week in Mentor School where a boy insisted on using the girl's bathroom. The girl shouted him out, and it was a big deal. And the superintendent said he could do nothing about it with the boy that wanted to be a girl that day and go into the bathroom. I'd like to know at the next meeting that you let the new superintendent know this is going to keep on going. I don't know if you received a resolution from a Dr. Stephanie Sidens from Columbus. I see some people nodding about the State Board of Education calls upon the General Assembly to resist federal executive branch attempts to undermine the original intent of Title IX. The Board urges the General Assembly to safeguard the inviolable rights of parents, the innocence of children, the rights, privacy, safety, and opportunities of women and girls in schools and athletics, and local control of school districts as defined in Chapter 3313. I understand that you should have received it by now, but if you get as many emails as I do, you might have not been ready yet. But what's going on in Mentor, I hope, doesn't come here. I, as a parent, would be in uproar if I thought my daughter was going to the bathroom and a boy walked in. I mean, sometimes you forget to even lock the door, and a boy could walk in. I don't think it's safe for boys or girls. And by the way, there's another case in North Carolina. It's called Mecklenburg County. It's also going on where a girl insisted on going to the boy's bathroom, and the parent is suing and asking for the removal of the principal because the principal, too, said he could condemn the boy for trying to stop the girl. So they've done this now in Europe, in Iceland and Finland. Lawsuits are happening. The Constitution works on both sides of the aisle. So let's see if we can get this under control now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Moving on to item 5A, approval of minutes of January 3, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5A?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 5A.
I think you skipped four.
Actually, skipped 4A. I apologize. I had my agenda too far down. So we are going to do 4A, Board Discussion. Does anyone have anything to add to this?
I wanted to bring up the Community Advisory Committee. I know we approved the policy, but I wanted to discuss what type of application process we would have for that committee. I was wondering whether it would be similar to the Strategic Planning Committee, if we would use a similar format, or if we would want to change that or use a totally different format for appointing members.
What's the timeline for assembling the committee?
I would hope that we could put it together within a couple months.
I think the application process that we took with the original Strategic Planning Committee was fairly efficient and was easy and simplistic in nature. We also already had Legal look that over and approve the formatting and the structure of it to be appropriate for that type of committee, which is, once again, by application. So it might move us to use something extremely similar and just modify the language.
Okay.
Right?
That's what I had in mind, obviously, change the language for the purpose. And then there would be a couple student representatives from the high schools, so we might have to add some different sections on the back. And those, though, would be appointed by the, or recommended by the principals, I believe.
So I think one thing is, we just want to make sure that we are communicating with the parents as well as the students, which I know we all care about. So I think that'll just, whatever we communicate, we'll talk to the parents and make sure that is similar to what we're doing, is what I would say.
I agree.
Did anybody have any ideas as far as a timeframe, any objections to getting that application together and then starting that soon?
No. If you'd like, because I worked with Legal to get the Strategic Planning Committee application together, if it's okay with the board, I could work with John to off-wrap that to him, give him the copies, prior communication about the what, the how, the why.
Yeah, and then maybe sharing the communication plan we've used for some of the methods with the superintendent's search to make sure it gets out to the widest audience.
I think that's a great idea. Okay, so John will connect, and we'll report out next month.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to just give a quick update on the superintendent's search. We do currently have a community survey open. You can find a link to that survey on the district's homepage in the news section. You just click in the PDF. There's a letter with a link to the survey. There's also a direct link that you can find on the Willoughby Eastlake Schools Facebook page, and that will be open for the remainder of the night and has been open for a week at this point. So we encourage everyone to give their feedback. We really appreciate it as we're building the profile for the needs for our future superintendent. Thank you.
I just had one thing to discuss. I wanted to propose possibly updating and changing our agenda around, and this doesn't have to be for discussion tonight. You guys can just take what I'm saying and do research, and we can discuss it at the March regular board meeting. But I would like to possibly get rid of the board discussion part of the agenda and instead add a new line item for new business, to discuss anything new the board wants to bring to the table. And then, towards the end of the agenda, have unfinished business, anything that wasn't resolved, or anything anyone wants to talk about. And then, for the personnel agenda, I know it's one line item now, and then it's, everything's kind of lumped onto one page, and I wanted to make a recommendation to separate that out. So it would, each thing would be its own line item. So it would say Personnel Agenda, Resignations, like Certified Staff, then Personnel Resignations, Classified Staff, Leave of Absence Appointments. So they would be separate line items, so it's easier to follow. And then it would say whether it's a new position or a replacement position, so the board would know rather than just looking at a lump sum of everything thrown on a page. So you guys can think about it. We can talk about it at the next meeting, but I just wanted to bring that all to your attention.
I think that all sounds great. I was wondering if we could also have a section of the agenda for legislative updates that I could provide. If you guys will bear with me for one second, I just wanted to let you know the bills that I'm currently tracking and can certainly add anything if you guys have anything additional. But SB 1, which is the old SB 178 about combining the department, or changing the Ohio Department of Education to the Department of Education and Workforce, or DEW, or DEW, as some people are calling it. That actually went before the Senate Education Committee today. They heard a bunch of testimony. Most of the testimony that I tuned in for was in support, and I think what we're overwhelmingly hearing is that people want to make sure that students are workforce-ready when they leave, even if they choose to go on to secondary education or post-secondary education. I do think we, as a district, do a good job of that and should continue to focus on that and highlight it. And I think that's what we're hearing from a lot of people across the state of Ohio. Other bills I'm tracking, SB 2, which has to do with property tax abatements, which could have an impact on our financial receipts. SB 11, which is about school choice and vouchers. There's also, to note, Governor Dewine talked about in his State of the States, how his forthcoming budget will address vouchers as well. That's definitely something that we need to be aware of because there's really one pot of money for education for the state. And if you look at the amount of money we get per pupil because of the district we're in and how they evaluate the finances of our residents and we're able to levy taxes, actually, a student would get more money than they would receive to come to Willoughby Eastlake to go to another school. So that is something that we should keep our eye on and try to understand how it'll impact us. SB 14 is about teacher requirements. Specifically, people call it the Veterans Bill, where veterans would be allowed to teach, but there's actually more to it about other reduced requirements for people with a certain amount of college credits and a certain minimum GPA. And then SB 17, which is about adding capitalism to financial literacy. So I will keep you guys updated, and I was hoping we might consider putting that on the agenda going forward.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you, because that article came out on Cleveland.com about that one school, the Charter School, that was receiving voucher money and stuff like that to do neo-Nazi, all that.
Yeah, that was a homeschool. Yeah, but you can receive money to homeschool. Right now, it's $500, but they're looking at increasing it to $2,000 per year, per student.
Have you connected with any of our local politicians to see about having them come to the school district?
Yeah, we have. Actually, Mr. Tornello has been helping us reach out and has both our Senator and our House rep we've been in contact with, and we are trying to set up, I think it's building tours at this point, would be our next step, just to educate them about what's going on in our schools, answer any of their questions, so that they can make informed decisions when they're voting.
Okay.
Anything else for Board Discussion? Now, we will move on to item 5A, Approval of Minutes of January 3, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5A?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 5A.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second that motion.
Discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item 5B, Approval of Minutes of January 9, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5B?
Madam President, I move to approve 5B.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second to approve 5B.
Discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mrs. Menzger?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item 5C, Approval of Minutes of January 16, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5C?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 5C, Approval of Minutes, January 16, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second that.
Discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item 5D, Approval of Minutes of January 24, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5D?
Madam President, I motion to approve Section 5D.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 5D, Approval of Minutes of January 24, 2023.
Discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzger?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to 6, Treasurer's Report. Mr. Tornello?
Thank you. 6A for your approval. This is the monthly financial report for the month ended January of 2023. Through the month, we are now 58% through the fiscal year, and we have received 51.6% of our revenues and 56% of our budget expenditures for the year. As we know, we don't receive our next tax advance until February, so that's why we're primarily funded through local tax dollars. So we are actually at our lowest cash balance point at this point of the fiscal year. We saw an almost $6 million drop in our general fund cash balance from December to January, or just between those two months. Overall, though, we are in line with where we thought we'd be. If you look at the one graph in the monthly financials, the green, the cash balance graph, that's probably the best way to see where we are in line. And like I said, our revenues are right around $1 million better than expected, and our expenditures are about $360,000 less than expected. So together, about $1.5 million better than estimated, if you add those two together. 6B, the OEPi Membership. This is the Ohio Education Policy Institute. This forum is a membership for that institution. Just a quick background about what it is. Since it's inception, the Ohio Education Policy Institute has been successful in providing credible and insightful information to assist policymakers and educators in making important decisions about education public policy. Formed for the purpose of supplying data on behalf of school districts on property tax issues, the OEPi has evolved to cover a variety of education funding and policy topics. Utilizing the expertise of consultant Dr. Howard Fleeter, this nonprofit research arm for education has become known as the premier school funding and education public policy resource in Ohio. The ability to analyze and offer credible information on behalf of school districts is crucial. Continued analysis of the new school funding formula, including the much anticipated cost studies to be released by the ODE, and other issues such as the Ed Choice Voucher Program and the impact of economic development programs will be considered over the next coming months. So that is why, this is before you, as a Board Member Schatzman mentioned, there are a lot of legislative issues that are on the horizon, a lot of which are impacting public school districts. And I'm not sure if we've ever belonged to the OEPi. However, I did discuss it with Board Member Schatzman, and we thought it was worth bringing it all to your attention. And then it's up for vote.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 6B, OEPi Membership?
Madam President, I vote that we approve...
6B.
6B.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
So, Schatzman, have, obviously, the discussion was had with Nick. In what value do you feel it's going to bring to the district outside of the description he read?
Yeah, so I think one of the things we need to think about as a board is what's important for us to pursue and what action we would be pursuing. And I think to do that, we really need to think about, you know, the financial impact that it could have as well as the other ramifications. So I think, you know, this year, everyone, from the governor to the House, to the Senate, everyone is focused on education. So I think there's going to be a lot of things happening very quickly. The budget's going to come out. It's going to go back and forth from the governor to the Senate, to the House, or sorry, to the House, the Senate, and then back together again, and then back to the governor. So there'll be lots of things, lots of pieces moving very quickly. And I think it'll be important for us to keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening and where we might want to get involved as a board, whether it's to do things like, there's a lawsuit out there where many school districts have joined against vouchers, challenging the constitutionality of that, which requires a financial investment, all the way to, would we want to, as board members, put together a resolution? Would we want to go down and testify, either as a board, as someone on behalf of our board, or as individual citizens ourselves? And I think to do that, we really need to understand all of the impacts on our district and make sure we're considering every angle. So I do think this is a good resource that we should consider participating in, so that we can have full information and make the best decisions for our district and our community.
Now, there is an awful lot that is going on down in the State House. How, say, we join this, how do we access that information?
They send out reports, usually weekly, and then we'll get that email blast, and then I'll send them off to you, and a weekly update if you're not getting them, or something like that.
Okay.
I think it'll also help us, as we work with our representatives, to be able to speak in an informed way with data. I know that data is important to all of us. It's important to our community. It's also going to be important to our legislatures to be able to give them actual numbers, both in aggregate and then specific to our district. So I do think it will help us that way as well.
I think it's the one thing that I would personally like to see, is the reporting out. What progress have they made? You know, $1,500, I mean, it's not a large sum, but I would like to see the impact of their efforts. And once we cut the check, it's for the year, and essentially, there's no rescinding. So if we're not seeing them really doing what we hope that they could do, it is, it's done. It's a done deal, right?
Yeah, and I think we'll have to be careful about, you know, evaluating, and then certainly we wouldn't want to join going forward. I think that if there's ever a time, this is the time for us to do it and use the information and see what ways we can build and kind of use that going forward, and see if it makes sense for us to do on a yearly basis, or if this is a, you know, one-time evaluation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. 6C for your consideration is a revision to the athletic event workers' pay schedule. This is to add junior varsity wrestling, ticket sellers, and gate workers. Typically, school districts don't bring junior varsities. They usually just wrestle with the varsities, except I guess there was an actual event where eight schools brought JV teams, and they had a JV event. So we have to amend the schedule to actually include JV ticket takers and seller, gate workers. 6D, Grant Application Acceptance. We have the Berlin family grant. These are various mini grants that are awarded both to North and South High School. So you can see the amounts awarded to both North and South High School. They actually have to apply for these grants, and then that foundation will select those mini grants. So it's not like there's an allocation per school. It's based off of just the teachers' applications. And then the PPG Foundation Grant, these are for STEM bins for the STEM learning at Edison. 6E, this is Establishment of New Account. This is to establish the PPG grant for Edison. This coincides with the grant acceptance application. 6F, Transfer Funds to Termination of Benefits. Typically, we transfer $500,000 a year. However, this year, we did have more retirements, so this is where we pay out severance payments every year. So we're requesting to transfer an additional $200,000 to the O35 Fund. 6G, Purchase Orders. These are instances where invoices are dated prior to the purchase order being in place, or even you could have a purchase order that had an invoice amount exceed the total by $3,000. The threshold is $3,000 or under. I could approve those myself. Anything over that would require board approval. 6H, Thune Activity Accounts. This is usually on a monthly basis. You'll see more of these over the summer, beginning of the school year. However, whenever you do have new grants, such as the Edison PPG Grant, they will need to have an approved budget before they can spend those funds. Then, lastly, 6I, Gifts and Donations. We received from Progressive Insurance, 25 whiteboards valued at $3,410, and these were donated to the district. 22 went into the school buildings, and three were placed in the Board of Education Building for professional development.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
The first item for your consideration, item A, the ESC of Western Reserve Service Agreement. According to Ohio Revised Code, all school districts in the state with enrollment of 16,000 or less are required to be aligned with an educational service center. Willoughby Eastlake is fortunate to be, to have access to such a high-quality organization that provides us with the services that we need. This year alone, the ESC of the Western Reserve has been able to assist us with deployment needs, such as hiring of certain administrative positions. They've received government grants that have been used to train staff members in various professional development subjects, and recently conducted trainings for our board members. This contract will allow us to continue this relationship.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item 7A, ESC of the Western Reserve Service Agreement?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 7A, ESC of the Western Reserve Service Agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
I had a question. What is this term for? Because I see that there's two different terms. One is a one-year, and one is a two-year term.
Yes. The two-year term would allow us to save approximately $10,000 per year if we agreed to the two-year term. So that's what we were looking at doing.
Thank you. Any other discussions?
I just wanted to thank you for answering all of my questions in advance of this meeting regarding understanding the relationship with the ESC and the benefits. So thank you.
We've all been there. I did want to extend a thank you to the members of the ESC who came this evening to join us for this. So we appreciate you and the service that you've provided for us.
Thank you. Mr. Tornello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item B for your consideration is a girls' flag football club at South High School. The setting was brought to our attention by the administration at South High. In order to add additional student organized club, we have to have it sanctioned by the district and it must be approved by the board. Although flag football is not yet taken off in our district, there are teams around us at schools such as N D C L, Menor Christian Academy, Cleveland Public, Nerdonia, Poland Schools, Seven Hills and some others. Passing this resolution would allow the girls at South High to form a flag football club and enjoy a new opportunity. And apparently they wanted to take their lead from the Pro Bowl, who started flag football this year with the NFL. So there you go.
So I just have a question. South is, I guess, North does not have a flag football.
Not yet. South did share this with North. Like we always try to, you know, obviously be consistent. So it would not surprise me if in a month or two, we might have another one up for, for North. But right now they're not organized as of yet.
And what rules and guidelines do they need to follow? Same as all of our other sports teams in the district or how does that work?
Yeah, I, they would. It's a, it's more of a club, you know, that, so it'd follow under more of those guidelines.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 7B, girls' flag football club at South High School?
Madam President, I move to approve 7B, girls' flag football club at South High School.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second item 7B, girls' flag football club at South High.
Discussion?
I did have a question. How many students are interested in playing? Do you know, Mr. Murphy?
I do not know that number off the top of my head, but enough for them to figure that they would be able to make it work, I believe, so.
I would love, if possible, for you to stay in contact with the principal and the club and maybe around April, May, report out or have them come visit and let us know how it's going, how they've established themselves. And because I think it's, it's wonderful when the students stand up and say, this is what I would like to have. This is what we're interested in. So I'd love to hear how it's going for them.
Sure.
Mr. Trinello?
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item C for your consideration is a service contract with T T G LLC. The staff members at N C I Eastlake utilize several types of software specific to their programs, funding for programs and training of employees and students. This contract allows them to engage an outside agency for technical support with those necessary services and is financially supported by the revenue generated within N C I.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item 7C, service contract with T T G LLC?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 7C, service contract with T T G LLC.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I motion to second, or I second that motion, sorry.
Discussion? Mr. Trinello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item D for your consideration is the 2023-24 College Credit Plus Agreement. This agreement is between us and Lakeland Community College, which is our primary partner for college credit plus classes. It allows students to take courses through Lakeland and receive college credit with tuition fees. We have had several students use opportunities such as this to obtain an associate degree along with their high school diploma. In addition, many others have used the credits earned to offset required coursework needed for their post-secondary education. We're fortunate to have Lakeland as a partner and to be able to enrich the district's curriculum using this community resource. Item E for your consideration is the Bryant and Stratton College Cooperating Internship Site Agreement. When studying professions such as teaching, occupational therapy, speech therapy, students are required to have a certain number of hours observing others in their field of study. During their field work, the students are not permitted to work independently with our students and prior to their arrival, they are vetted to ensure it is safe for them to be in our schools. This agreement enables the district to partner with Bryant and Stratton to allow students to complete some of those required hours. Item F for your consideration is a special services agreement. This item on the agenda relates to services provided to our special needs students. Sometimes it is necessary to utilize outside providers if we are not able to meet student goals identified on an I E P or if there is a specific need for continuity in programming. When this happens, the I E P team determines the educational requirements of the child, what is in the best interest of the student and how to fulfill those. This contract will allow the district to meet the educational requirements in a particular student's I E P. Item G for your consideration is another parent guardian transportation agreement revision. This item is on the agenda each time we add new students to the list of recipients of funds for transportation. Because additional students were added on, to this, the board is again required to vote on these changes in certain circumstances such as when a parent transports their child to a private school, parents are entitled to repayment for mileage. The payment amount is set by the state of Ohio. Item H for your consideration is an overnight out-of-state request from the South softball team. This item is like other field trip requests you have seen in the past. Because it is an overnight and out-of-state, the board is made aware and asked to vote to approve travel. This trip is a spring break, a spring training trip for South High School softball team. Students will be responsible for the expenses associated with their travel and this experience. Traveling to a southern state allows students to prepare for their upcoming season so they can safely compete at the start of the season. And item I for your consideration is the personnel agenda. Each month, the changes in district personnel are required to be approved by the board. These changes will include retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts, some of the payments made to people that may have worked at an athletic event. All persons are employed pending receipt of satisfactory records, background check and verification of necessary certifications. On this agenda, you'll see examples of these.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Moving on to item 8A, meeting notification. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 13, 2023 at 7:00 PM at 35353 Curtis Boulevard, Eastlake, Ohio. 9A, do I hear a motion to approve adoption of consent calendar?
Madam President, I move to adopt 9A consent calendar.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Mr. Trinello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to item 10A, adjourn to executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to its executive session?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 10A, adjourn to executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I move, or I second the adjournment to executive session for appointment and, or employment of a public employee.
Thank you. Mr. Trinello?
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Item 11A, adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We're in executive session as of 7:37 PM.
There will be no action taken at executive session.
We did it. That's record time. Got lots to do in executive session.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you both.